City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Spirit, be with us this evening and give us your guidance as we handle the business of the city. Allow us to use our best judgment as we deliberate the issues of the evening. Please allow our prayers for the people of the Ukraine to be heard. Help them as they struggle to maintain their freedom and liberty. Give aid to the ones that have been injured. Give comfort to the families that have lost loved ones. And give strength to the ones continuing in the defense of their nation. Let the countries of the world continue to give support and have this devastating war come to an end. Hear our prayers, and we ask all of this in your holy name. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Goldberg, thank you for your invocation. Very inspiring. As everyone can see, we're back on the dais again. And as I said during the work session, just bear with me as we get used to the electronic voting system and all council members. Remember, if you'd like to speak, push your Request to Speak button, and your name will go up on the queue, and I will recognize you in the order to which it is received. So with that being said, the Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of March 16, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Our motion be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Councilman Williams.
Second it.
Motion seconded from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Council members, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the September 15, 2021 work session and regular meeting. And a motion will be in order. Counsel, Councilman Williams.
Motion approved.
Motion of approval, Councilman Williams and Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to special presentations, and understand we have three this evening. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we do have three proclamations to present. Now, the first proclamation is recognition of National Library Week, which extends from April 3 through April 9 throughout the Commonwealth and the United States. With us this evening is to accept the proclamation are Clinton Rudy, Director of Suffolk Libraries, and Library Board members Sean Bildy and Jeff Benton.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build communities, and whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities, and whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers joining supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3, 2022 through April 9, 2022, as National Library Week in Suffolk, Virginia, and encourage all residents to visit a library this week and engage with your library staff. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed the 16th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2022.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, thank you for your continuing support. It has actually been three years since we've been here in person for National Library Week, so it's great to be back. And during that time, it's been busy, but not business as usual, and that's been a great opportunity for us to really step back and evaluate what we're doing and why we're doing it. And during that time, we took the opportunity to revise our mission vision, which are really the guiding documents that guide what we do and why we do it. And those are always used to guide us, especially during unusual circumstances like a pandemic. And allows us to really be strategic in our decision-making and formulating plans. So what it really helped us to think about was what's next? What does the community need now versus three years ago? And we're really trying to reorient ourselves to the community needs and trying to address those as we learn what they are. And this often involves making connections in the community, especially with our community partners. Our role is to be a connector and provide everyone with the resources and the information they need to be successful, because it really is about having an impact. And I like to say, we're not just information, but transformation. And I think I used this quote three years ago from Walt Disney. "Around here, however, we don't look backwards for very long. We keep moving forward, opening up new doors and doing new things because we're curious, and curiosity keeps leading us down new paths." Thank you.
And I get to tell you what you already know, which is that Suffolk Public Library is an award-winning library in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we're very proud of that. And that's thanks to the hard work of the staff. And beginning with the pandemic, they really looked at what were the community needs, and immediately they implemented virtual classes and events. In fact, other libraries in the state asked Suffolk Public Library for advice. How did you do it, and how'd you do it so well? We also assisted Suffolk's Fire and Rescue Department with 3D printing of parts for essential safety equipment for first responders. We are a distribution point for, thanks to the Virginia Department of Health, for COVID-19 test kits. Thanks to a generous donation from the OBCE Foundation grant, we have external lockers so people can pick up things after hours whenever they want without even coming in. And we provide important technology for the public, laptops and Wi-Fi to go. So thanks to all of these things that the staff have done, we can provide a lot of services. And with continued support, we can keep doing that, and with a great new library, we can do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Give a round of applause for everything they did during the pandemic. Good job. Get a proclamation.
Our second proclamation is recognition of the week of the young child. With us this evening to accept a proclamation from the Early Childhood Council and the Department of Social Services are Shonda Lomonic, Kelly Donnell, and Callie Carson. Crossen, excuse me.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation. Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation. Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the Suffolk Early Childhood Development Commission and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 2nd, 2022 through April 8th, 2022. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs, that can provide a foundation of learning for children, and whereas teachers and other essential workers who make a difference in the lives of young children in Suffolk deserve our thanks and recognition, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children's futures are important elements of education. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim the week of April 2nd, 2022 through April 8th, 2022, as the Week of the Young Child in Suffolk, Virginia, and hereby, and encourage all citizens to make sound investments in early childhood. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 16th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Tammy Rittenhouse, and I'm the Chair of Suffolk's Early Childhood Development Commission, and I'm so pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of the ECDC and Suffolk's children and families. We are so fortunate to have a council that prioritizes the well-being of our children as they are the future of our community. It is the ECDC's mission to ensure that every young child in Suffolk develops to their fullest potential. Like many businesses, departments, and organizations, the COVID-19 pandemic impacted the early childhood world in a multitude of ways. As the world shut down, childcare workers began to face significant barriers and difficult decisions had to be made. While many childcare locations reluctantly closed their doors, some stayed open and continued to provide quality care. These past two years have highlighted for all of us just how essential our childcare workers are. And although 90% of our childcare programs have reopened, we are seeing the ultimate impact on our young learners and who have experienced significant social, emotional, and academic setbacks, especially in early literacy and math. ECDC continues to advocate and support our early childhood workers and the families they serve. That is why we made it our goal this year to put extra effort into providing resources, support, and training for all 57 childcare center locations in Suffolk. During the past year, ECDC has hosted our first in-person training since 2019, provided 120 professional development scholarships for local providers, distributed 55 care packs with sanitizing, disinfecting, and PPE materials to childcare centers and family daycare homes, kicked off a successful pilot year of the Jump in Childcare Provider Education and Business Training Program, which helps interested community members gain the knowledge and skills needed in starting a family day home business. What makes ECDC so successful is our wonderful collaborations throughout the city and the region. ECDC works with the Department of Social Services, the Virginia Department of Education, Suffolk Public Library, Suffolk Public Schools, Parks and Recreation, Centerra OBCE, the Children's Center, Children's Harbor, EVMS minus nine to five, Smart Beginnings Western Tidewater, and the Micro Nonprofit Network. It is through these partnerships that ECDC is able to build Suffolk's early childhood community for the betterment of all children and families. In closing, I will ask all ECDC members. I've got some with me, Shawna and Ms. Kelly, who is new, to stand, thank you for standing, and also thank them on behalf of their investment to Suffolk's youngest population. Thank you. And on to Ms. Kelly.
So the next one is for- We're transitioning into the child abuse prevention. Yeah. We're all a team. We support each other, right?
Next.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay. I think it was my cue, Mayor, right? Our final proclamation-
So we transition.
Is the recognition of the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I would ask same staff to be present.
Madam Clerk, we need to read another proclamation.
Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the Suffolk community, and whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of partnerships created among child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, and families. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Suffolk, Virginia, and call upon our citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 16th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Good evening. I am Callie Crossen, Family Services Supervisor for Child Protective Services for the Suffolk Department of Social Services. According to the Child Protective Services Accountability and Agency's annual report for the year of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, Suffolk received 797 reports of child abuse and neglect. Out of those 797, 405 were actually accepted as valid cases of abuse and neglect. This is an ongoing issue, not just in our locality, but localities across the state and across the nation. We encourage those members of the community and those who have interactions with our children that if you do see something, please speak up. Encourage our children that it is okay. It is okay to talk. Not only does CPS or Child Protective Services investigate or assess those families, we do provide families with services and tools and resources that they need to strengthen their family unit and to prevent the recurrence of abuse or neglect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly wants to get a-
Sure.
Don't want to miss any food, oh.
There's still one to protect the roses. We appreciate all of that.
Okay, we will now proceed with adoption of the, what did I do? Oh, gifts. We will not interrupt the giving of gifts. That's okay. See, she skipped right over me. No, I'm just kidding. Oh, was that what? You hurt her feelings there for a minute. Want me to share this one? Are we good? Okay. There we go. Thank you. All righty. At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. I think. Okay. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented. And we have Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
And Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for approval. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
I do have one individual registered to speak this evening as an agenda speaker. Kelly Hangler, 9345, Eclipse Drive, representing self regarding consent agenda item number 11. Kelly Hangler. That concludes the agenda speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
I'd be happy to present the consent agenda items. Item number seven, a resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to make certain additions and deletions to the urban highway system. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate a Walmart community grant for the City of Suffolk Sheriff's Department. Item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board for reimbursement of legal fees for the City of Suffolk Circuit Court Clerk. Item number 10, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation Open Space Lands Preservation Trust Fund Grant Program for the Jericho Lane Public Access Project. Item number 11, an ordinance to amend Chapter 34, Article 4, Section 34-109 of the City Code concerning the removal of weeds, excessive growth of vegetation, trash, and debris. And item number 12, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 14, Section 2-463, entitled Education Committee of the Code of the City of Suffolk.
Now, Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Member, members of council, item seven, the city periodically submits through VDOT additions or deletions of streets to the urban highway system. This resolution adds approximately 10.9 lane miles to the system, which the city will receive future maintenance funds in about $142,000 per year for this addition. Item eight, the city has received $2,500 from Walmart in support of the Suffolk Sheriff's Department Community Outreach Program. The funding will be used to purchase supplies. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Consolidated Grants Fund for FY22 by $2,500. No local match is required. Item nine, the city has received $9,113.04 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board for reimbursement of legal fees to the City of Suffolk Circuit Clerk. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues, expenditures of the Consolidated Grant Fund for FY22 by $9,113.04. No local match is required. Item 10, the city has received $200,000 from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation Open Space Land Preservation Trust Fund Grant Program for the acquisition of parcels in the Jericho Lane area, along with a conveyance to the City of Suffolk of a right of interest or privilege to protect six acres of open space. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the Capital Projects Fund by $200,000, and there's no local match. Item 11 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 34, Article 4, Section 34-109 of the City Code concerning the removal of weeds, excessive growth of vegetation, trash, and debris. The purpose of the amendment is to change the time period for removal from 15 days to 10 days from a receipt of violation from the city. In addition, it changes the administration fee from $75 to $100. Item 12 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 14, Section 2-463, Education Committee of the City Code. Purpose of the amendment is to provide language to allow for alternates to the committee.
Okay, there are no questions about the items. A motion be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett. Okay, we get a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Ward.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to RU18 Residential Urban 18 Conditional Zoning District for property located at 7521 Burbage Drive. Zoning map six, parcel 12, asterisk two, asterisk one, account number 306003365. This is RZN 2021-21 conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Member, members of council, Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a rezoning request, RZN 2021-21 conditional, Burbage Drive Active Adult Condos to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from OI to RU18, which is our residential urban 18 zoning district on a conditional basis for property located at 7521 Burbage Drive. The comprehensive plan designates this parcel as being located within the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. As noted, the property is currently zoned OI Office Institutional. The property is bounded to the north by the OI District where the VDOT District Office is located, and a largely vacant B2 parcel is located to its south. That largely vacant parcel does have an overflow parking area located on it for the College Drive Chick-fil-A. However, it's largely 16 acres of undeveloped land zoned B2. To the east, you have M1 Offices Uses, and to the east, you have Town Homes and Single Family Residence zoned PD Plan Development. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to RU18 from OI in order to construct an age-restricted multifamily development. The applicant has voluntarily proffered that the development will be limited to 98 total multifamily units, and occupancy of all units will be restricted to individuals that are 55 years or older in accordance with standards established by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. A conceptual plan was provided in support of this application, however, it is not proffered and may be subject to change. The conceptual layout depicts 50 units to be constructed as 10plexes, excuse me, and 48 units to be constructed as sixplexes. I hear you have the noted proffer statement. As noted, the units will be restricted in accordance with HUD standards to individuals 55 years of age or older, and the development will be limited to a total of 98 condo units. The 98 units proposed will result in a density on the property of 10.3 units per acre, which is less than the maximum density allowed in the RU18 zoning district, which is 18 units per acre. Wetlands are located on the property, approximately 1.6 acres of wetlands. That does impact the ability to achieve more units on the property to bring that density a little higher. The 2035 comprehensive plan, as I noted, designates this property in the Mixed Use Core Use District, where the recommended density is 25 to 40 units per acre. However, it's important to note that the subject property is located near the edge of the use district, where lower transitional density should be considered. Additionally, the proposed density does align with adjacent residential development across Burbage Drive. As with all rezoning requests, staff does evaluate the proposal against the policies and guidance established within the 2035 comprehensive plan. These policies are discussed in detail in staff's report. These policies are discussed in detail in staff's report, provided as part of your agenda packet. However, it's important to note specifically Policy 6.1, which states the city should encourage development of a balanced and diverse housing stock throughout the city. Furthermore, Action Item 6-1J states that the policy should allow opportunities for retirement housing. Once again, staff has evaluated the merits of this application and has concluded that this request aligns with the applicable provisions outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance and the 2035 comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. Lastly, this item was considered by the Planning Commission at their February 15, 2022 meeting, where a motion recommending its approval was passed by a vote of eight to zero. That concludes my presentation at the conclusion of the public hearing. I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's good to see you all. My name is Melissa Venable. I'm the owner of Land Planning Solutions at 5857 Harborview Boulevard in Suffolk, Virginia. I don't want to reiterate what Kevin had mentioned. He's always thorough, and he's always been a pleasure to work with through this process. I'll just try to go through some bullet points real quickly. As you mentioned, it's a nine-and-a-half-acre site, currently zoned O.I. The property's been on the market for years. It is adjacent to the VDOT site. That building had been built and was on the market for years. We were fortunate to have VDOT move into that building, I want to say just a few years ago, but I guess that's dating myself because I'm getting old, and it's been more than just a couple of years ago. The property's across the street from the Scottsfield Residential Development across Burbage Drive. It's adjacent, as I mentioned, to the VDOT site and adjacent to a large B2 commercial development, as well as the B2 development that's on College Drive, which makes this, in my mind, a great transition piece or a great transition parcel. We're proposing this small infill parcel to be rezoned to multifamily active adult that can take advantage of the wonderful amenities that surround the site. This would encourage a mix of uses in this location. The rezoning would provide diverse housing inventory and age-restricted home ownership within the Burbage Grant neighborhood. The site is a good transition parcel between the core commercial in Harborview and the existing residential community to the east of the site. The proposal is filling a tremendous need for homeownership in our market for the baby boomers, ages 58 through 76. I had to look that up today, as a matter of fact, 1946 to 1964. It was just presented last week at the ODU Market Review. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to go and listen, but we have a huge need for housing in our market, and it seems crazy because we keep building and we keep building, but we have a tremendous need specifically for this market type, for the baby boomers who are looking for an amenitized neighborhood, move-down type of unit, or home, I should say. So this really helps to fulfill that need. The site is extremely attractive, and it's very fitting for residential community. As you noted, there's an RPA on the west boundary of the site and Matthew Lake behind the site. The site can easily access shopping, restaurants, and entertainment. Just across Burbage Drive is a transit stop as well, which makes, again, this very attractive for residential community, and there's walkways along Burbage Drive for easy pedestrian access. The rezoning is supported by the Unified Development Ordinance and meets all levels of service. The current O.I. zoning, as mentioned in the narrative, is a difficult zoning, especially as our location has seen these mixed-use communities come out of the ground and be very successful. According to the staff report, the comprehensive plan and the ordinance, the proposed higher-density age-restricted neighborhood seems to be most fitting. With that stated, I'll stand by to answer any additional questions, and I will look forward to your support on this application. I'll also note that Mr. Bowman, the applicant, is here tonight to answer any additional questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We have anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? We have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. A motion would be in order. Councilman Ward?
To approve.
Can move for approval from Councilman Ward. Councilman Fawcett?
We're on. Thank you. These buttons are driving me crazy tonight.
Once I hit you, you gotta leave alone.
Light me up. All right. I want a second as motion, but I'd like to make a brief comment. The site I'm very familiar with and the project I'm very familiar with, and I can tell you that it's going to be a beautiful setting for this project, and, you know, the 55 and above folks are just out there looking for this type of environment. And keep in mind where it sits. The accessibility to transit, the major Kroger that's across the street, and the new eateries that have opened up along College Drive makes us very attractive. This puts it right in where we need it to be. We would never probably see an O.I. in there because O.I. is not popular at this point. So this is a great thing, and I take pleasure in seconding this motion.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Ward, a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing ended. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, five to 12 children, on property located at 5628 Plummer Boulevard. Zoning map 13E, parcel 23, account number 301187120. This is CUP 202023. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development will also provide the presentation, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As stated, this is a conditional use permit to establish a family day home on property located at 5628 Plummer Boulevard. The property subject to this request is located in the Northern Growth Area, and it's designated for Core Support Use District and is part of the Nansman Voting Borough. The subject property is zoned RLM, Residential Low-Medium Density, and is located within the Belleville Meadows subdivision. The property is surrounded by single-family residential on all sides. To the west, east, and south is the RLM zoning district, and to the north, across Plummer Boulevard, is the RU zoning district. As you may be aware, family day homes allow residents to provide care for up to 12 children within their home, which is the maximum permitted. Currently, the applicant and the property owners keep four children at their home and wish to expand to offer services for up to 12 children. Currently, the family day home is licensed to the Department of Education to care for children from infancy to 12 years of age. The current hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and are proposed to remain the same. The applicant will have one employee, which will assist in care for the children, and they will have to comply with child-to-staff ratios, which are established by the Department of Education. The applicant is proposing to utilize the living room, kitchen, and three bedrooms for the daycare. The children will have access additionally to a bathroom. The daycare will utilize approximately 742 square feet of the home's 1,296 square feet. The Department of Education requires that 50 square feet of floor area be provided for each child. Therefore, the requested maximum of 12 children may be permitted based upon the information we have. There's currently a two-car driveway, and there is availability for on-street parking as well. The home has a four-foot fence bordering approximately 6,200 square feet backyard, which will be utilized as the outdoor play area. The outdoor play area will be limited between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in accordance with supplemental standards established within the UDO. Staff has evaluated the use permit request for compliance with the city's Unified Development Ordinance and the 2035 comprehensive plan, and has determined that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2020023, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report. Lastly, the Planning Commission at their meeting February 15, 2022 moved to approve a resolution recommending approval of this request by a vote of eight to zero. That concludes my presentation, and I will be available for questions following the public hearing.
Okay, once again, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And this is to speak in favor?
My name is Geneva Bowden Bagley. Address is 5628 Plummer Boulevard. I am one of the owners of Rainbow Smells on Plummer Boulevard. We have been open throughout the pandemic. We are now asking for approval to accept more children, as we are getting more requests to have more children in our facility. Right now, we have four children that's in our care, and we're asking for approval for more. We use majority of the home for the childcare, as he said, and the outdoor play is usually around 11, no later than 3:00 p.m. So if you grant us approval for this, we can start accepting more children in our care. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, to speak in favor, to speak in favor of this ordinance. Anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration. A motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Ward?
Moved to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Ward. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second motion.
And a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 304 Eugenia Street. Zoning map 34G19A, parcel 5, account number 350388000, and this is CUP 202127. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Kevin Wine will again provide the staff report.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. The next two public hearings are the same applicant, adjacent properties. So for the sake of simplicity, I've combined a presentation here to talk about both of those, as they're the very similar request, or requests asking the same thing. So in that regard, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for residential structures located at 304 and 306 Eugenia Street. The affected properties are located in the Central Growth Area, and they are designated Mixed Use Core Use District. As I stated, they are adjacent properties. The properties are zoned RM, Residential Medium Density. That's our base residential layer within the downtown area. Single-family residences are the most prevalent land use that is permitted in the RM district. And to the north, there's also some M2 zoning, which is our Heavy Industrial Zoning District. To the east, there's some RU and O.I. zoning in close proximity. The purpose of these two conditional use permits are to renovate two existing non-conforming single-family dwellings in excess of 50% of their replacement value. This is out of Section 31801F4 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which pertains to non-conforming structures, requiring that a CUP be obtained in instances where the proposed renovations to these types of structures exceed 50% of their replacement costs. Both of the existing structures are non-conforming as it pertains to building setback requirements, as they encroach into the required side and front yard setbacks as required in the RM zoning district. The current setback standards for the RM district are required, are 25 feet in the front yard and 10 feet in each of the side yards. These were obviously developed and constructed far before we had a zoning ordinance as a city. Another non-conforming aspect of the properties is that no off-street parking is provided, as the front and side yards are not large enough to accommodate parking. Current standards require that two off-street parking spaces be provided for single-family dwellings. Here we have the homes. The home at 306 Eugenia is on the left-hand side, is roughly 1,725 square feet. It has four bedrooms and two baths. The city assessor's office values this property, the structure, at $20,000. The applicant is proposing to spend roughly $97,000 on the renovation. The home at 304 Eugenia Street, on the right-hand side of your screen, is roughly 1,772 square feet. It's comprised of three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The city assessor values the structure at approximately $32,000. The applicant is proposing to spend $92,000 on the interior renovations. The proposed renovations pertain to the exterior and interior, and they include framing, drywall, plumbing, electrical, HVAC updates. No expansion to the building footprints are proposed as a part of these applications. Staff finds that both conditional use permit requests meet the criteria set forth in Section 31306, 31406, and 31801 of the Unified Development Ordinance. And specifically, it's important to note that the proposed renovations to the existing single-family dwellings will enhance the property values and enjoyment of residents of the community. Additionally, redevelopment and investment in the downtown area specifically is encouraged. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both CUP, CUP 2021027, and CUP 2021028, with the conditions outlined in staff's report. Lastly, the Planning Commission at their meeting on February 15, 2022 voted to approve a resolution recommending approval of these conditional use permits, both by a vote of eight to zero. That concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to stand by for questions following the closing of public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of the Council. My name is Jonathan Rogers, and the address is 5959 Jefferson Avenue in Newport News, And this is my partner, Dan Villanueva, same address, and we're both owners of JD Equity Solutions, who will be handling these projects. And Dan and I are real estate investors who are looking to rehabilitate houses within the City of Suffolk. We are here to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, we look forward to the approval of the CUP and help in development of the City of Suffolk, one house at a time. And we also want to thank the planning staff for your assistance in facilitating this application and moving it forward as well. And we're here to stand by to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of. Does anybody else want to speak? If not, have a seat. We'll see if anybody else wants to speak, and if we have any questions, we'll call you back to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We get our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We get our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Hearing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What's your pleasure? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have you come up? Please, come up. Thank you very much. I went by and looked at the properties, and walked the properties the other day, and they're in pretty rough shape.
Yes, sir.
But obviously, you're spending a significant amount of money when doing that. You sure you want to do this?
Don't talk them out of it, Don.
Yes, to answer your question, yes, sir. We are sure. We analyzed the deal and opportunities well, and, you know, we know there's a lot of risk, but we understand through our research and analyzation, this calculated risk that we're taking, and that we're definitely more than happy to move forward and hopefully do more properties like this in the city of Suffolk.
Well, I appreciate your effort and your excitement about doing this. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Goldberg, and our next speaker will be Councilman Johnson.
And I would like to thank these young men for investing in our city. This is, we need lots more of this. This is excellent, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have any further discussion of the motion? Councilperson Butler Barlow.
I'm sorry, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just want to...
Lights went in and out.
Yeah, and we're all confused by the light system up here, but I just want to congratulate you all and commend your efforts to do this kind of a job. I am a proponent of taking care of old buildings and making them new again. So thank you so much for your interest and your desire to do this.
It's our pleasure.
So just wanted to say, appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on a couple of the comments. It's wonderful to have somebody come in and want to revitalize and reestablish an old home and bring it back to life. So I know you have your work cut out for you, but then again, we'll look and see how it looks at the end, but keep coming back. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your encouragement.
So any further discussion? Just before we're done, I also want to thank you for investing in our city, basically taking two structures that have dilapidated to that point and be willing to spend that kind of money to rehab them and redevelop it. I appreciate your investment, and as Councilman Fawcett says, feel free to come back and do some more.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, we have a motion for approval and a second. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And our last public hearing, I guess, is a sister ordinance there. I think we do have to do it separately. It's an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 306 Eugenia Street, zoning map 34G19A, parcel 4, account number 352736500, which is CUP 202128. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Again, Kevin, of course, gave you a overview of both structures at the previous public hearing. I would say, Kevin, if you came to the mic to see if there's any questions the council may have on this structure.
Counsel, do you have any other further questions for Mr. Wine? This is a companion request, I guess. Okay. Hearing none, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed, and an ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilperson Butler Barlow. Hold up, let me turn you on there.
Move to approve, please.
Got a motion for approval from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Don't take that the wrong way. Let's see. Nobody in my queue. Councilman Goldberg.
I'll second it.
And a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right, you're moving right along. We have no ordinances, no resolutions, no staff reports. We do have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 4th, 2022, to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 citywide effective real estate tax increase due to reassessment, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Williams, Councilman Fawcett.
Second the motion, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, April 6th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
Move.
Motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time? If so, please explain the process.
Yes, Mayor Doeman, there are speakers registered this evening as non-agenda speakers. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of the city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
This is Carolyn White again at 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the city of Pewsville, Suffolk, Virginia. I had a whole bunch of things I wanted to say tonight, but then I thought, I could send it to you. Tonight, I want to think, I want to talk about maps. I talked to Mr. Butts this week, and I asked for a map. I got the map, just a map of Pewsville. I just wanted to see how many paper streets that are listed on the map that you all have in the city of Suffolk. Guess what? You have half the maps that are, or the streets that you've closed up on that map. You even had something up there about private streets, and I was told a private street is not in Pewsville, because that goes into a community of apartments, condominiums, or what have you. So we have no private streets, and that's listed on the map also. And I asked my councilman, make sure he get his map. Maybe he has a little bit different from mine. So we have a lot of people paying taxes on streets that are not even listed. What do we do about that? You're just taking money and keep taking money and keep taking money, but you don't do anything about the streets. All right, Suffolk, you said you was going to talk about paper streets. I hadn't heard anything yet. Let's get started. Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing, excuse me, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne White. I'm the president of the Pewsville Suffolk Civic League. My address is 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. My thing is, there, I've just heard that they were talking about doing the ditches on Pewsville Road. I'm totally against doing the ditches on Pewsville Road unless you do the ditches on Town Point Road first. I mean, don't try to please the community by coming through, doing something on Pewsville Road, so it look like the neighborhood is being taken care of. There may be one family that lives on Pewsville Road that's a member of our civic league. All the other families live on the other 13, 14 streets down Town Point Road. So I just heard that they were going to do this. I plead, please don't. Please don't do Pewsville Road first. I mean, I know you want to come through and do something in the neighborhood, but if you do it on Pewsville Road, you're doing something to please those developers who are going to build on the other side of the trail and on Bar White Lane and all that down Pewsville Road, or the developers who are already on Pewsville Road. I just plead with you. Don't do Pewsville Road first. If you're going to do anything in our neighborhood, do it where the kids can benefit. Just do Town Point Road first. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia,
Good afternoon, City Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Pamela Brandy. I am the vice president of Pewsville Civic League. I live at 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia. I come here to speak on several issues. First off, you all know that I have three passions: the elderly, the disabled, and the youth. When I look at Pewsville, which is a historical black community founded by free slaves, when I look at what is being done inside of Pewsville, which Pewsville Civic League has been here talking about the paper streets, the elderly, that you are taking the homes, the taxes. The last time I spoke, I asked about having the city commissioner, Attorney Brooks, to be present to be able to answer some questions, since we can't get an appointment with him at all. And the residents saying that, you know, the only way that you can find out information about taxes and all is that you have to send in an email for the request. Well, we have a lot of elderly people that live in Pewsville, disabled, and the elderly, they do not own a computer. The elderly do not know how to work a computer. So how are they going to be able to send in a request for information about their taxes? Or even when they go in present into the office, his office, it can't get anybody to come and speak with them? Unheard of, unsaid. When it comes down to our disabled and our youth, we have spoken many times about the youth standing on the side of the street, people passing up and down Town Point Road fast, flashing water on them. Unsaid. You talk about what you give in recognition for the elder, for the National Library, the Week of the Young Youth, and National Child Abuse Prevention. Can you prevent a child from begin, being hit by a car or getting hurt because there's no sidewalks in Pewsville? And then you talk about, well, we're going to want to put, open up drainage down Pewsville Road. When we've been asking about Town Point Road, well, there's nothing but flood. And then you just put a sign outside, down Town Point Road, on John Street, just before John Street, talking about high water. But you also talk about in some of your consent agendas, talking about how often y'all going to take care of vegetation, overgrown vegetation and weeds and everything? Well, it's amazing. Since you put in the COVID on Town Point Road, when have you ever came and cleaned that out, the over vegetation and weeds and debris and trash? Hmm, let me tell you, never. Because we've been here sitting there asking for the same thing. And then you talk about, there's funding for Pewsville. I see how you doing all the development, College Drive, 17, shoulder hill road, all around Pewsville. Burbage Grant now. And it's, I'm okay with the senior citizen development, but what about inside of Pewsville? And you talk about history and things to go into the library? How about talk about the history of Pewsville, what we have in Pewsville from the African-American people that founded Pewsville? They had stores, they had different communities where the families worked together and helped one another. We even had a lady called the Purple Lady. You know about that? Huh? Why our children don't? I tell you why. Because you don't care to share that information. You want to do some history and educate our youth, since we talking about, we have the whole month of April? How about coming into Pewsville and sharing the youth that live there and around Pewsville about all the history of what the community of free slave did in Pewsville? And guess what? Their children are still yet alive. And guess what? They shall rise again. But you all was voted in to do what's in the best interest of all people and all communities. And by the way, Pewsville is a community within the city of Suffolk. You need to think about sharing that information and not just taking away from the elderly, the disabled, the youth, and also the ancestors. It's a shame that we continue to come here, and yet nothing has been done...
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
... in Pewsville. So let's get busy, because you do have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions this evening.
Is there any, are there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and then comments, and at this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Well, Suffolk is billed as the caffeine capital of Virginia. That slogan was in play at the dedication of the Massimo Zanetti Beverage USA Distribution Center in Suffolk on Tuesday. The distribution center opened for operations last year, but had its official dedication ceremony yesterday as Mr. Massimo Zanetti himself joined Mayor Doeman and members of city council to highlight the facility. The vast warehouse complex, the equivalent of over four football fields under one roof, is handling the company's bulk product distribution as well as e-commerce fulfillment. Currently, Massimo Zanetti Beverage USA imports green coffee through the port of Virginia and transports it to its main manufacturing plant off Progress Road, where it roasts, grinds, and packages its own brands. In transportation news, Suffolk Public Works was happy to announce the reopening of Lake Cahoon Road Bridge to vehicular traffic on Saturday, March 5th. The bridge had been closed since March, late March 2021, in order for the bridge's 400-foot deck and superstructure to be replaced. Public Works would like to thank the public for their patience and produced this very short video to highlight the project's completion. And again, that bridge reopened on March the 5th. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is partnering with the Nansman Brewing Station for a St. Patrick's Day cleanup event this Saturday, March 19th. Be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. Volunteers are needed to participate in the litter cleanup in the heart of downtown Suffolk. Participants meet at the Nansman Brewing Station parking lot. That's at 212 East Washington Street where they can collect cleanup equipment before setting off to remove trash from the surrounding area. If you'd like more information or to participate, contact Litter Control. You can email them at littercontrol@soficva.us or call 514-7604. Keep Suffolk Beautiful will host a recycling drive and tire amnesty day for Suffolk residents. That'll be on Saturday, March the 26th. It'll be held at the Public Works Operation Facility located at 800 Carolina Road. It'll be going on from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. that day. It's a free event, a great chance for folks doing the spring cleaning to recycle and responsibly dispose of those items laying around the house, garage, shed, or maybe in your backyard. As usual with these events, there'll be more than just recycling going on as the Suffolk Sheriff's Office and Suffolk Commonwealth Attorney's Office will be on site to manage the free document shredding. Tire amnesty, of course, another large part of the event. Residents are encouraged to bring any unwanted rimless tires removed from the rim that are 22 inches or less in size. Sips of waste solutions will be collecting household hazardous waste from any resident with a valid Suffolk ID. And Suffolk mosquito control will be on hand to give out information as well as, of course, mosquito dunks. We're getting closer to that season for Suffolk residents with packs containing two mosquito dunks each. From Suffolk's best-kept culinary secrets to national award-winning restaurants, Suffolk Restaurant Week promises a savory blend of the city's signature flavors. The spring edition of Suffolk Restaurant Week will be March 19th through the 26th. Now, during this showcase, participating eateries offer three-course price-fixed menus at the deluxe, premier, or ultimate levels. You don't need a coupon, vouchers, or tickets. You just have to order from the Restaurant Week menu at each participating restaurant. With 10 eateries from which to choose, it's the perfect time to sample new restaurants and old favorites as local chefs prepare delectable dishes for your dining enjoyment. For more information, you can visit them online and check out those menus ahead of time at dininginsoficva.com. Residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or call the State Call Center to find out a vaccination location convenient to them. Also to note, the Western Tidewater Health District will hold a free COVID-19 testing event that'll be on Friday, March the 25th. It'll be held at East Suffolk Recreation Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, we leave you as we always do with the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners, the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 514-4000 if you want to get connected to city services, perhaps have a question needs to be answered. We have staff there to assist and provide some assistance as I just said. With that, say good evening to you all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
I will now move on to announcements from council, and we're going to start with Councilman Williams. Let me get you turned on there. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to be brief. First, I would like to congratulate the Kings Fork girls basketball team on winning the state championship. I believe that this is the, the first time that the basketball team has achieved this goal, and I wanted to, to say kudos, congratulations for a job well done. Also, City Manager, the citizens in the South Suffolk Pleasant Hill community would like to know the progress of the ongoing projects in the area and really want to know whether or not you have an estimated time when these projects will be shovel-ready. I think we, I kind of mentioned that to you. Also, I've been receiving phone calls from citizens, a lot of citizens, about the high water bills, and I'm pretty sure a lot of the council members up here have gotten some of the same calls. I don't know what we're going to do about it, but I would like staff to take a look into some type of assistance for these people. I've also received calls concerning our current transit system scheduling. Specifically, specifically on Sunday, I'm not really sure whether the transit system is running on Sunday, is it? I've got a lot of people that are in need of transportation on Sunday, getting back and forth to work and church and, and they don't have transportation. So I've received a few calls, and I think we got some emails regarding that. Also, my word for the month of March, perseverance, persistence in doing something despite difficulty or delay in achieving success. With that, I'd like to say good night and thank everybody for a good meeting.
All right, Councilman Goldberg, let me get you hooked up here. Bam. Hope I got you. There we go.
Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Good. First of all, the, the girls' basketball was fantastic. You don't realize what, what difficulty that is to achieve that level in competition, and I think they, they ought to be very proud of themselves, and I want to commend them for it. It's just fabulous. Second thing, we went to the Massimo Zanetti opening yesterday. It was ribbon-cutting. It was excellent. The investment that this company has put into our city is fabulous in the, in the job opportunities, plus the fact that they also do manufacturing here over on Progress Road, and that's going to continue going on, and that's really a key factor in what they do. And the last thing I'll talk about today, I went to the workforce service meeting for the workforce group for the Hampton Roads area. Sean Avery is the chair of it, not the chair, but the executive director. And there's a new program that they're starting, and I'll show this to you. It says, "Let's Go to Work." They're working on more employment. They're going to start a program doing this. A young lady named Kelly in their office is heading this up. She's a fabulous young lady who's encouraging this, and this is what the program is going to be like. You will see this pretty much all over the Hampton Roads area, and I want you all to see it first from the meeting today. With that, Mayor, I say good night.
Mayor, Councilman Ward.
Yes, I also like to congratulate the Kings Fork girls basketball team. Like when the council said, it's a hard task to go against some of the best in the state. It's hard work from the coat, for the team and the coach. And I'd like to congratulate the coach, and I hope I get his name, Maurice Frofanna. He did a great job, and a graduation again. But we can't forget the Nazan River Boys Indoor Track. They won a state title also, so congratulations to them. And the coaches is Tiffany Crocker and Sean Ellis. And also the Nazan River Girls Indoor, they won also. The coach is Rob Gill. With that, I would like to also bless the country of Ucain with things that's going on, and like one council said, we be glad when that war is over. With that, I'll say God bless.
Councilperson Butler Borlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pile on with the congratulations for our local athletes. That's very exciting, and so many congratulations to the Kings Fork Women's Basketball and as well as the Nazan River Indoor Track Teams, men and women. That's, that's a great activity and a great testament to our city. So thank you and congratulations. I want to give a shout out. There's a food distribution program that has started in Chukutuck called Loves and Fishes. It's a coalition of local churches, civic league, and just various volunteers. And there's a monthly food distribution on the third Thursday. Sorry, I'm getting this, I'm, I've lost this month. So tomorrow, for St. Patrick's Day, we're having a food distribution. And just want to encourage that group. It's a, we've just started. It hasn't been going on for a year, and we're trying to find our way at what will be the best way to reach the community, but so far it's going quite well, and I just want to say a public appreciation of the folks that head that up. Also, and this is statewide, but it's Ag Literacy Week in Virginia, and children all across the state of Virginia are receiving books about the dairy industry at the elementary school level, and folks in agriculture are reaching out to all the, the elementary schools. And I'm happy to say, and I would like to say a big thank you to the Nansman Farm Bureau Ag Education Committee, who has provided books to each Suffolk Elementary School, each public, excuse me, each Suffolk Public School Elementary School, as well as three copies for one each of our libraries, so that the kids in Suffolk can enjoy those books as well. And just again, appreciate everybody who is participating in Ag Literacy Week, trying to communicate about agriculture to our kids. And speaking of agriculture, just want to remind everybody that the spring planting season is close at hand. There will be a lot of farm equipment, already is a lot of farm equipment on the road. We are bigger than you and we are slow, but please try to be patient and cautious, and we will do our best to keep ourselves and yourselves safe as well. But just to kind of my little public awareness for agriculture. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
The spring season looking up, I think people have opened their minds. As well, the emails for the last two weeks have been coming in. Our citizens have a lot to say, and they have lots of questions. And with that being said, I'd like to take just a minute to thank our wonderful city staff that, for me, for my sake, I couldn't do what I do without their help in answering these emails, particularly of Mr. Aziz Felder. I just want to give a little kudos to him. He's had a hard week putting up with my stuff. But it's been, we're glad to hear from you, and if we don't have the answers, we'll find the answers. So keep sending emails and keep addressing us and keep asking us to help you. The other thing I'd like to say is thank you to Public Works for pushing the Lake Cahoon Bridge project really hard to have it open. It is a lifesaver. For those of us living on 58, we have another way around now. So keep that in mind. If you're coming from downtown and heading toward Holland, take the Lake Cahoon Bridge, come through the country, come up Kenyon, go through the industrial park, check it out, and you get right back to 58, and you'll save yourself probably 25 minutes. With that, I'll also say patience is a virtue, and let's not forget that. In the end, we're going to have a wonderful road, and it's going to be great, but we've got a long ways to go, so just remember patience for your sake and for the people that are working on the roads' sake. One last thing, this is for my partly Irish wife and her children, my children. I'm not, I have no Irish in me, but Happy St. Patrick's Day this week. It's for the good of the Irish, and everyone have a good evening.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Kings Fork Girls Basketball, everybody said great things about them. They just knocked it out of the park, what a great job that group did out there. They're pretty awesome. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to my niece, Nikki Fink, and her mama for being the cheerleader coaches for that school this year for the girl's side of the house, and they worked hard with those cheerleaders to keep those basketball girls rolling. So I just wanted to give them a good, good shout out. We talked about Massimo Zanetti's 50, you know, 355,933 square feet of food and warehouse distribution. Along with that, you know, the Virginia Port Logistics Park put in 17.5 million in the building, an additional 800,000 in investment in equipment. Opened this facility in 15 months through a pandemic. The building's phenomenal. I had a chance to speak with Mr. Zanetti, who I worked with on a project 16 years ago, and only way we could really communicate because he doesn't speak any English is, his wife was their lovely wife, was a great interpreter, as well as Mr. Rossi was also a good interpreter, interpreter for him. So I want to thank them for making Suffolk their home to come here and put this operation, the second operation here in Suffolk. They have the one on Willroy. Now we have them down on 58, and it's just going to be awesome to have them here. I want to give a personal shout out to Erica Dolly, for 20 years of service today in the city of Suffolk, being our city clerk. Good job, Erica. As well, we thank you for being here and helping us. Restaurant Week, let's knock it out of the park. Let's get the people into these restaurants, support our local restaurateurs, get some good food out there. There's plenty of good places to, to look up and check out. City Manager, that presentation on the Lake Cahoon Bridge was pretty awesome. That was an awesome job, and it looks great. So everybody that was involved in that, can't say enough, but thank you for everything you've done. So the last thing, recycling starts here on 26th. For all you that like to recycle or have stuff that you want to throw out that they'll take, please go over there and let them have it. Take a little ride out there, Carolina Road, and dump it off. It'd be a good morning for you to do it, and to keep it from going into the landfill. The least we can put in the landfills and we get it distributed to the proper areas, the better off we are in the long range of life. So please go out there and take your recycling out. Thank you for a great meeting, Mayor and Council, and I look forward to seeing you in the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to start out as well congratulating the Kings Fork basketball team, and great job. The boys didn't quite make it to, they made it to the final, but they didn't win the last games, but they do a round of applause as well. I think they did a outstanding job, and also the track team there at Nazan River. I think all of our schools, I think, are really stepping up to the plate and doing a great job with the, with the kids. Also, I would like to say that on the Police Department, Chief Chandler, I would like to congratulate you and your staff on continuing with the Explorer Team. I see you advertising that more, trying to get more young ladies and men involved in that, to get them some law enforcement training in the background of how to be confronted and address things in the community. And I shared that, like, I'm hoping that we will get a lot of those kids to get involved, so that will give them a lot of background in law enforcement, what it's all about, and hopefully that would help keep them in the community safe and spreading the word about what to expect when they're dealing with the police force, with the education and training. So I want to commend you and staff for continuing with that program. Also, I'd like to say that today, in the work session, we talked about the cameras in the work zones, schools, and stoplights. I think that's a great tool, that it's going to be beneficial to all of us in the future, so I'm very pleased to see that that's being looked at, to bring forth to the city that we will be able to travel the streets a little bit safer, and I hope that will really help to improve the safety of our people and the citizens. Also, I would like to say that, thank the Alpha, our Alpha sorority for their honoring me this past weekend on the 5th for citizen work and whatnot. I cannot thank them enough for that honor. Thank you, Mayor, and other council members, Councilman Ward and Councilman Williams also in attendance. I want to thank you all for your support for that. And also, Erica, I want to congratulate you on 20 great years. I remember when you came here. So it don't seem like it's been that long, but it has been a great pleasure having you working along with us. So I just wanted to say that. And one thing that caught my attention this afternoon with the presentation, the young lady came up and said there were 797 cases of child abuse in Suffolk. That really got my attention. And I'm hoping that with the pandemic, I have heard a lot of comments about different things, that that helps brings on a lot of situation, and I don't know how that's working, but I'm sure hoping that we all will look around ourselves, we see something, say something. We need to continue to talk to the young people to make sure that they have a way of communicating with us and not being afraid to come to any adult and speak to them to see something or feel uncomfortable, they should say something. And every, you know, it's too often we pick up the paper, look at the news, and you see all this stuff that's happening with these young children, and it breaks my heart every time I see that. So I just wanted to mention that to... So I just wanted to mention that. I don't think too many people think that many cases just in Suffolk alone that you've had that kind of a child abuse in a year's time. So that really was touching to me when she made that presentation, so I just want to comment about that, that let's please keep those children in prayer and please, sometimes we see them, we just, they just need somebody to talk to, and we should have a listening ear. So let's please pay attention to our young people that we are involved with and around. And my final comment is on Ukraine. I pray for them daily, and we have to pray for our country as well because no one wants to see anyone going to war, that mean lives lost. And we want to really keep them in prayer, and hopefully that this thing will end more peacefully than it has started out. So with that, I would say good evening, and I just keep everyone lifted up in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll finish up this evening. I know it's already been said, I don't want to be too repetitive here, but I do want to congratulate the Kings Fork girls basketball team for winning the state championship. I also want to congratulate Nansman River High School Boys and Girls Indoor Track Team for winning state championship. And I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that the Kings Fork Boys Basketball Team went undefeated all season. I'm not sure there's another team in Hampton Roads that went undefeated. I had the pleasure of attending their last home game, and you, there's a talented, talented group of kids, and not only that, but they've got some excellent grade point averages. If I was not mistaken, they've got 3.5 grade point averages as a team. So I want to commend the coach and the kids not only for their athletic prowess but for their academic prowess at the same time. It's hard to be an athlete and a student at the same time, but the team that they went to play, I got a report on that game, they get two, a team had two 6'5" guards that are both heading to Division One schools. So they ran into a little bit of a hornet's nest, but they did have one heck of a season. So congratulations to all four of those teams for their accomplishments this year. I too, as Vice Mayor alluded to, I did attend the Black and Gold Gala that was sponsored by Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity and the local chapter's Epsilon Iodolamb, I always have time with the, hard time with the Greek letters. And the two honorees there were Vice Mayor Bennett and also Pastor E.C. Copeland, both recognized for their contributions to our community and for their accomplishments during their lifetime. There were several, we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings in the city, couple bigger ones, I went to Lake Prince Woods, I went to Tent, they had a ribbon cutting for their hospice care unit that they've opened. Lake Prince Woods has been just a huge asset. We're lucky to have them in our community as a retirement community. I mean, they're outstanding, and really, you hit there and you go all the way through the process, nothing but good things. I'm glad that they are an integral part of our city. Massimo Zanetti, I didn't really, up until I did some research, I didn't realize that was actually the guy's name. His first name is Massimo, and his last name is Zanetti. You know, he's a true gentleman, you know, very, you know, didn't speak English that well, and I can't believe this, the first time he laid eyes on that building was to see what it would look like, but they traveled a long way, and he was very, very complimentary of our city, very complimentary of our staff, our deputy city manager, Kevin Hughes, all during that process, the staff, the interaction that they had, the fact that they finished that within 15 months during the pandemic, and he contributed a lot of that to the cooperation that he had from the staff. And good news, you know, travels is the kind of things that we want to be known for, and I think it shows in who we've been able to attract to our city. People want to do business where they're welcome, and they want to do business when it's an easy process to do business. Erica, thank you for 20 years' worth of service. Think you're good for another 20 more. I'm feeling it, and I've been here for half of them, yeah. And I think it's going to be our early evening, it's two in a row, so I'm not complaining. So I'm going to go ahead, and I'm not going to belabor the point anymore. I'm going to go ahead and go to my quote of the night, and that is from Robert Kennedy, who I think everyone knows, past United States Attorney, brother of President John F. Kennedy, who unfortunately was assassinated June 5th of 68. I kind of remember that. There was a lot going on in 1968, had to be the year I graduated, but anyhow. And that quote from Robert Kennedy, and I think it's somewhat appropriate right now, and that is, "What is objectionable, what is dangerous about extremists is not that they are extreme, but that they are intolerant. The evil is not what they say about their cause, but what they say about their opponents." And with that, I will say good evening, and if there's no further business, ask for a motion for adjournment, and Councilman Fawcett, hit the button first. Your motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, and Councilman Williams, you're lucky, number two.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Everybody prepare yourself for the vote. Are you prepared? Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.